Okay. Good evening. It's February 11th, 2025. This is the GPOS work session. And quarter revisions. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees, subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at 7:03. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair and fire department supervisor. Kelly, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be Deniana and Aluteck homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you. Could we do roll call, please?
Sure.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Here.
And Kelly Okanek. And Brian Burnett.
Here.
And Mike Edgerton.
Presenting.
Oh, clever. And Jennifer Wingard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All are present.
All present. Thank you, Margaret. And are there any disclosures this evening? In hearing none, we'll go on to vendor agenda revisions and approval. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any objections? But by consent, the agenda is approved. First item on the agenda says first quarter budget revision. So Kyle.
Sure. Uh, start.
If you were Chad GPT, I would say, talk to me like I'm five.
I'll take you through it.
Yeah, please. Because yeah, this is my first time.
Hi.
You're welcome.
Send it out loud.
I'll throw myself in the mud, try and.
Uh, so, uh, what, uh, I'm going to take you through the night is basically where at with the budget and what we're proposing for changes for first quarter. So, um, and, uh, I'll pull this down a little bit since. I don't want to do it, but okay. So, uh, this up here tonight is showing you, um, currently where we're at. You'll see current budget totals. And then we're on proposing for first quarter revisions and then our current mill rate and where the mill rate is going to go. Um, yeah, we're going to do it. And we're also going to talk about assessed values for the whole valley. Uh, as the assessor, um, is, uh, it's changed assessed values and we have quite a bit of new construction within the valley. So that's also brought up this whole assessed value, value, value for the Girdwood Service Valley service area. So, um, tonight, what I am proposing to the board for consideration, um, is an increase to our capital contributions. Um, and the reason for it is that with the increased assessed value, um, our mill rate would be still the same. Um, now that we have more room, uh, within the mill rate calculation. So, uh, currently, and I'll go down to this line right now. Um, we are calculating our mill rate based off of, um, the original budget, which was approved by the assembly in November or December. And, uh, that was a mill, that was a assessed value of 896,000. So let's round up to 897,000 there. Um, after talking with the assessor's office and, uh, uh, getting the new total, they are assessing right now that the Girdwood Service Area total valuation is 964,000. Um, so 965 if we round up there. Um, my first quarter mill rate, uh, calculations are based on 960. So I took out $4 million because there is going to be appeals on people's properties probably that might shift this up or down. Most likely it will go down. 964, I would say is the top, um, but people can go and appeal their, their, uh, evaluation of their houses. Um, you know, there was a significant increase in condos this year for, uh, uh, valuation. Um, but on the higher, some of the higher end properties, the valuation came down. But when you look at the valuation for mostly any property in Girdwood, it's well below what it actually go for on market price, um, out on the market. Um, so, uh, they were doing catch up in that aspect. And then we had quite a big new construction this year, uh, whole new set of condos, um, duplexes come in.
What exactly does 5.5 mills mean? What is a mill?
A mill. So a mill is a calculation and, uh, um, let me show you here because we should, we should go to this page, you know, pull up. So if you are really interested in diving into the weeds, um, you can type in.
Let me try and give a quick answer to what I'm proposing. A mill is basically the tax rate you pay for every $1,000 of, um, valuation of your property. You pay that number of dollars. So it's 5.5, 5 million dollars per thousand dollars of valuation.
But then Kyle's saying that it's something that he's calculating.
Yeah.
Versus something that I'm being charged.
The two things that happen each year, the, the, that your property is assessed, that can go up. If that goes up and we spend the same amount of money, the rate drops.
Yeah.
There's two.
Oh, okay.
There's an amount your, that's assessed across the valley and there's a rate and they kind of balance each other in good way. This is the calculation from last year.
This is the calculation. So this is the calculation currently.
Sorry, for this year.
For this year, it's based on the, uh, the valuation of Girdwood at 869.
Okay.
So this number is going to change. And so when you do the calculation, that's going to drop it down. If I go back to this sheet here, I'll show you. Um, so, uh, basically, uh, I took this formula here. So this is the current total for our operating budgets. Um, which is, uh, just under $5 million there. And with the current valuation at 960 million, our mill rate would be 5.142. So let's round it, let's go 5.1. Um, if we increase these contributions to capital, um, then it'll bring us back to the 5.5.
Okay.
Uh, by code, we cannot go above six. So we're still a half a mill. That's always been the focus of our office is to keep us a half a mill below. Most, uh, service areas and in the municipality itself, they go up to the cap rate. So legally, they could go up to the cap rate without having to have a voter initiative. But we like, I always encourage the board to consider keeping it, uh, below a half a mill in case we run into something like an emergency or some sort of thing that we need that extra money in some way. So we've, we've always traditionally kept it, um, in this range. Uh, last year, our mill was 5.5. Um, so really it won't change much to taxpayers and their bills from last year to this year, um, in that aspect. Except for those in condos. Um, they most likely will see an increase in their, uh, property taxes because their valuation went up, uh, this year, uh, in that aspect. So, um, overall, this would still keep us, uh, in the category, I think would be like the fourth or fifth lowest tax district within Anchorage. Um, and, you know, our mill rate probably with school district, which school district is half of what you pay in taxes. When you pay for taxes, half of it is for that, a little bit of area wide, and then the rest go to here, um, to the service area. Um, we would still be, uh, probably the, the fifth lowest task district out of like 15 or 16 tax districts. And we still would be the lowest tax district that provides all major services, which is police, fire, um, parks and rec. Um, and, uh, street maintenance and then the economic, uh, aspect here. So.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So what I'm proposing here is, uh, a $300,000 increase for parks and rec capital. And then a $50,000 increase for, um, uh, street maintenance. Um, and this is to start replenishing that account. We're doing that big Fish Culvert project this year on Davos. We pretty much depleted our, our account there. Um, and, uh, to pay for that project, uh, we do have, uh, 300 coming in, uh, that we're working on right now, but 350. Uh, the Mount Hood project is somewhere around 1.2 million dollars, um, to get that done. We've asked for a state grant, but the chance of getting state funding this year is pretty slim. So we need to start building that savings back up to do that fish culvert on Mount Hood. And then, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, is 300,000. We like to use that towards the suspension bridge to replace the hand tram, um, to help offset those costs out there. Um, we have raised outside of the tax district, uh, through fundraising and grants. Um, we've raised close to almost 2.2 million, 2.3 million dollars. And so far, we've asked the service area for 500,000. I'd like to ask for another 500,000, um, to go towards, um, the, uh, suspension bridge, um, to get us over. Uh, we're starting to feel pressure now with these tariffs coming on, that, uh, we're going to see that project cope even more, um, by at least 25% because the costs of steel. Um, so we're watching that and we, we'd like to bid it this year in order to get it while things are still competitive. The other aspect about this year is that the construction market looks to be competitive because the state has been behind on getting projects out for evaluation or for, uh, bids. And so we have actually a good chance to have contractors that are more competitive this year than they have been in the past. So. So we're looking at those two areas that, that, and they would primarily our operating budgets will stay the same. Um, we have no changes there. This is just capital contributions and it would still keep us in the same area where our mill was originally calculated to be. So I'll open up for questions.
Kyle, are you at all concerned about, um, getting some, some additional capital in case the timberline, um, ballot initiative for the bonding issue, um, is declined by, uh, by voters?
So that, that, I think our, our priority between the two projects there, um, it is that fish culvert. Yeah. Because we're more worried about, uh, uh, flooding and major damage to the residents down there in that re, that area and washing out that road to the airport. So we would probably really focus back on that and then we would reevaluate what we want to do.
We get that.
Yep. So if that bond does pass, uh, we would start paying that back in 26. And it would be something around 225,000 a year to pay that down. And so we would probably recalculate all these contributions in 26 and look at where we're at. Because we'll have to take on that debt and we start paying that off over 20 years. Now we can accelerate the payment on that if we want to. And we can make larger payments if we can and take it down. Otherwise, we can stick with it. So. But yeah, that, that is something we'll have to evaluate once we get into.
Yeah.
Uh, see what, you know, and really will be a tale is, is that if that, uh, bond passes in Girdwood, um, but doesn't pass throughout the rest of the municipality, which has always been the case, um, then it really tells that Girdwood wants to move forward with it. We'll look at other initiatives on how we make that happen. So. We're challenged right now. Um, I, 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 daily, I keep getting reinforced that, uh, we need to figure out our own problems, our own funding issues. Because it's becoming tighter and tighter to find money, especially now in the federal level, um, to find funds. Uh, we're just praying that, that we're almost done with the EPA grant for the, for the Ruane, uh, culvert down there. We got, last week, we got notice that we got the final questions. We're just now waiting to see if actually the money's going to come for that project. If it doesn't, that's, that's a $1.6 million fish, or a fish culvert box down there that needs to come in somehow. So. So we're finding different ways to fund all these projects and we have to probably do it on a rolling board. So. So, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I was just kind of asking that with the, you know, the, the 300,000 chunk, you know, and, uh, coming towards the bridge, which of course I, I support. But I also want to, uh, just sort of check in on, on other priorities and, and, um, if I can ask another one. Um, are we anticipating having to create any sort of a capital fund for, um, industrial park, um, site work? Or, um, implementing what we hope to get done there?
I think in the short term, no. I think we could work that through our, um, our maintenance contract, uh, to work that area. Uh, we'd be probably just mostly doing down there is removing vegetation and then just improving drainage and then leading to, um, eventual fencing. I think we'll use earth berms at first to create our fencing and territory down there to give more protection. And then set the fire department up with a training facility. They have all the stuff there. It just matters setting up the pad. And we have, we always, every year, we purchase stockpiles of gravel and riprap and things like that. So we're prepared for emergencies. So we can use those stockpiles to help set that up. So, so I think we, in the, in the short term, we would be good there. The one project that we may be looking at is how to move the power. Uh, we've had, um, a lot of hesitation from Chugash to do that project until we actually get that lot plotted out. Um, they want, uh, they want four corners. They don't want two. And so we're waiting on these actions that happen so we can move forward on all that. So.
Thank you.
If Jennifer has a question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and thanks for those questions, Brian. Those were helpful. Um, Kyle, I appreciate what you have to say about, uh, keeping our mill rate low and below the maximum. And also that we have one of the lowest mill rates for the services provided, although can't help but wonder if we don't have some of the highest property valuations per capita of almost any tax district as well. So I'm wondering, I know this is a little bit of a crystal ball prognostication, but do you see us? Let's say just on the possibility that property evaluations increase next year as well. Do you see us constantly keeping at the 5.5 and not dropping below it?
Well, I guess it's a priority of what the, at the, um, what the board feels, you know, uh, we're always chasing, uh, capital needs and we're always chasing inflation on things. We're going to go out to bid next year for a new contractor and, uh, you know, our, our limits, uh, like this year hasn't been a big issue. Uh, it may be come summer because we want to do a bunch of summer work, but, you know, our limits on our contractor is 700,000 a year. And then last year with the snows, you know, we were right, like bumping over that, um, giant, and we barely did much summer work. Um, so it depends on what the bid rates are. So I, I think it's a, it's a combination of factors as to what we would discuss. Um, I would probably encourage the board to stay where they are at the 5.5, but if the board wants to for it, then we would probably look at cuts. Um, or just, uh, you know, evaluations go up, we're just keeping things the same as it goes forward. So we, we can explore all that when we get into the next budget.
I think though, it's also, like you're saying, the external landscape is changing. So we might need to find ways to become more independent. And that just sounds like a mechanism for independence also.
Correct. You know, our contributions are pretty equivalent to what the city does for bonds. Um, but the thing about bonds, I believe, and Mike, you might be looking on this, but I think bonds, they work within the cap of payback of bonds work within the cap or are they separate from?
They're outside the tax cap.
So they're outside the tax cap and we have to work with inside the tax cap to, uh, you know, and the voters approved a 6.0 tax cap for Girdwood. So we have to work within it to raise capital, um, do capital projects and also maintain operating, just standard maintenance on all our stuff.
The advantage we have is our tax cap is a mill rate cap with the, uh, with the municipality as well elsewhere, it's a dollar cap. So increased assessments don't necessarily, new building does, but increased assessments don't necessarily help us in a way that help the bowl in a way helps us.
Just testing though, I mean, Jen's testing one end of the spectrum and I believe me, I don't want to pay more taxes. And is there an argument that the context of bonds not passing and everything else, we need to go up to six to create an emergency or to create more savings account in the context of external threats? Like I said, I don't want to pay more taxes, but I'm just curious what that world looks like and as a calibration point for why 5.5 is the right number?
Well, I think 5.5 is the right number at this point. I think we would definitely have to evaluate where it goes. I think we've been adjusting for several years now because we've been hard to get state grants. I mean, we lived many years with, you know, first it was Ted Stevens. Um, with earmarks that came in and, you know, Egloff out here in Town Square and Olympic Mountain Loop are prime examples of those capital dollars. And then we were doing well in Juneau with capital funds down there during, um, some of the better days down there with funding. Um, but over the last five to eight years, we've seen all those dry up and it's become much harder to get, uh, those funding. So we, we've, we've shifted and pivoted and, uh, started to create these savings accounts, um, to get to, get to points where we can actually pull off some larger things. So I do think that we have to keep aware of that as we go forward, that, um, you know, we will have infrastructure needs. And that's why I'm always very apparent, like when we look at building something out and we always have the reminders, we have to take care of what we have first, um, before we get there. So yeah, you know, things are aging out and we'll have to address them as they go. We try to work a lot of repairs under the current, um, maintenance and operation budget. Um, but sometimes they're just larger, like for example, the, the fish culverts on Aliaska Creek, they're, they're large capital purchases. And so, so, but we're paying for those by ourselves. It just takes us a sniffing amount of time to save for them. So.
Margaret?
I just want to mention, since we do have a couple of people who are new to this process, um, this is kind of in a unique meeting because what we're addressing is the first quarter revisions, like making a change to the budget that has already been established. But going forward from here, there is a whole budget cycle that you guys will be involved in. And it starts off with a review of the 2024 budgets and where we all landed. And then we move on to a couple, maybe three work sessions, working on the 2026 budget, which you guys will need to pass in September of 2025. So this is, this opportunity is pretty focused on, on these budget revisions, but we'll be talking about all of that stuff in really extensive details and including some other elements, you know, like our police contract, like we've been talking about will be, um, due for something else, um, in two years. We have two one-year extensions that we're about to, I think, probably pursue. So, you know, that 817, that also is a, a flexible number here in the not too distant future, you know, nothing to, don't have to do anything about it right now, but we should just be aware. And I think the fire department always has a really long list of things that they need in order to keep themselves up, um, as far as their requirements as well.
And that's, that's something that, you know, in the fire department, we, uh, we just purchased the new engine, which will be here, you know, fortunately, it's a two-year delay on receiving it, but, uh, we're paying that debt down. Um, luckily they got a new rescue through air wide bond and, but we replaced all the command vehicles in the last couple of years. So we've been catching up with them. So they're actually, their capital needs right now are being good. It's just smaller things like turnouts and hoses. Um, but we've been, and I told Michelle, I said, we need to get back to what the five-year plan is so we can start thinking about how we allocate money for what's coming and how we get prepared for it. So we're not all of a sudden in an emergency situation trying to figure out what to do. So. So, yeah.
Either. Mike?
Yeah. Um, so when we actually pass the budget, um, September, I think it was. Um, I proposed that we increase the, uh, the same argument. Basically, we increase the capital component up to one mil. That would have been slightly less than these numbers. I think this is about 1.07 mil. So it's about seven percent higher. But it's, it's very similar to what I, uh, proposed, uh, in our, in our budget. So I'm supportive generally of this. Um, the one thing I would say is that this would be a jump ahead, a jump above what we've been paying a mill rate before, the actual rate. It was sitting around, I think the highest mill rate paid before is about 5.4. And it's generally been about between 5.3 and 5.4 for most of the last eight years. Um, so this is a bit higher. Um, I can see an argument for keeping it a bit below 5.5, but it'd still be 5.4 to 5.5. So there's still an increase. Something else I can say as well. Yeah, the, um, I, I would argue slightly with that claim that, that it would have been as low as 5.1 because we knew the, we knew the, um, assessment was going up. So it's probably more realistic to say 5.3 is what we would have, if we hadn't increased, we'd probably be sitting at 5.3. So really it's a jump from 5.3 to 5.5.
If we hadn't increased.
Sorry.
If we hadn't increased.
So I mean, your figure of 5.14 there, that mill rate is assuming that 2024 assessment, that we knew it was going to go up like at least six or seven percent. It's actually gone up by a level.
So. Yeah.
I'm saying realistically, we said 5.14, it would actually be.
Yeah, I did that calculation with the 960 million.
Yeah, yeah. It would have been, what we expected was about 5.2. Uh, we had. Um, so basically, yeah, I, I think this is, this is a bit higher than I would go, but it's very close to what I probably would have suggested and what I was suggesting, um, when we voted last time. One thing I'd add is if the sales tax proposal goes through, then the, the, um, the flip side of us having very high property assessments is the reduction in mill rate, which would come from the sales tax is actually a very big reduction in, in the property taxes. So people who own property here would be, uh, talking about, you know, multiple thousands of dollars, uh, reduction typically. Um, so there is an argument, um, that if we're, if we're just thinking of our pocketbooks, at least for those of us who own property, um, the sales tax would be a very good thing. Um, so we may end up with that offset next year or even the year after, actually.
Thank you, everyone. Any other questions or comments?
One, I do have a lot. So, um, I was going to suggest, uh, my original suggestion was just one mil as a capital contribution, which is just a little bit less than this, but not that much less. It's probably like 20, 30,000 less. And then keep as a soft principle, we always have one mill of capital, um, going forwards. Um, would that, would that be a material difference or would it be, I mean, would that make, if it was instead of 300 to parks and rec, if it was, you know, 270 or something with that?
I would drop the 50,000 out of streets.
Okay.
I mean, the priority right now is within parks and rec for the suspension bridge.
Right. Because, because we expect the cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all it does is it really just stretches out longer time to save up the revenue.
Right. Right, so.
Um, Jennifer?
Thank you. Um, Kyle, could I just review, I caught the part about, there's kind of a push on the bridge because of the potential increase in costs. So we actually save money if we can put in more money upfront. Is that a correct summation?
It is.
Okay. And then is there a similar consideration for street maintenance? Besides just increase, the like tariff increases and stuff or like, in other words, can, is there a buildup? Yeah, sorry. I'm sure you understand the question.
Yes. I mean, if we had, we, if we had all the funds available, we would want to bid the Mount Hood project, uh, this year. We would have, ideally, if we had all the funds available, we would have wanted to bid the Mount Hood and the Davos project together. Because then there would be one mobilization and demobilization for that, uh, contractor and then there, there, uh, everything would be spread out between the two projects. So, but we just didn't have the funds and, um, yeah, and I knew that we may not have the funds for the Mount Hood project. If we're slowly saving, it may take us another five years to get there. Um, so, so, um, so at this point in time, like I said, we're pretty tapped on the, um, on the funds for, for roads. So, uh, we are doing a contribution of 300,000 this year. I wanted to increase it by another 50,000 just to give us a little more boost. Um, but, uh, that will help us to start going back up. One thing we are, we do have a large contingency built into the budget for this Davos project. Um, and I think we'll be fine. Uh, but like just today, the engineers came back and found out that the, that the five gauge pipe won't work and they had to redesign it down to a three gauge, which really just irritated the heck out of me because they'd gone through this whole process of making it and then they caught that in final review. And so, you know, that was a 32,000 dollar increase on the project. And so, so it's those things that, you know, but I told the project team, I said, we've got to watch it. Because, you know, I'm very tight on this budget and we have the contingency built in, but we can't go beyond it because we don't have a lot of funds and I don't want to spend more towards this project than I have to. So, so anyways, yep, that, sorry, Jennifer, that was a long answer.
Might have a follow-up.
Yeah, I do have a follow-up if that's okay. Um, thank you. No, that's super helpful. And I think this is kind of connected to what Kelly asked, but again, swimming to the other side of the pendulum. It sounds like because we've depleted our street maintenance as much as we have, there's really not an argument. I mean, what if we went to like 575 so we can get the most done before costs increase more? But it sounds like we're depleted enough that we couldn't necessarily start another project. Is that a good summation?
That is a good summation. Yeah. We're, you know, we've, like, we, the focus this year with our state capital grant was just one project for Girdwood and it was that project. And, um, so, you know, we're really focused on that project next, but we, we need, uh, we would probably need 1.5 million to do that project. So, um, so yeah, it's, uh, it's a, it's a ways down the road. Unless that grant comes through and then we get it and we can do it next year, that'd be great. Because we would have the funds available to make it happen. But, um, the way oil prices right now and, and what we're hearing from representatives, it doesn't seem likely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Kyle, for all of this presentation and all the work and numbers. And after today, what would be the step for our body and then the assembly with the timeline?
Well, uh, what, uh, we will, yeah, we wanted to present this tonight as a work session so you can digest it, uh, think about it, call us. We'll answer any questions, give you more information. We really just want to get you educated so you can start thinking about it. And, um, and then at the March meeting, uh, we would probably, uh, request, uh, a vote on consideration for the increase. And, um, and then that way we can get it to, uh, OMB and get the process started because the assembly will start to review it. Uh, close to right when the GPOS meeting is and then get prepared and usually after the election is the Friday, they do the first quarter revisions. So sometime in May. So. And usually after the election is the by, they do the first quarter revisions, so sometime in May, so, yeah, late April.
I think they're planning to do it the last second meeting of April this year.
Yep, second meeting of April, so so we, that's be our timeline there.
Okay, thank you, second meeting of April, or what's your revision?
Is March our deadline for getting first quarter in or do we need to get it in before?
Um, I will reach out and just give them a deadline. Um, I'll confirm it. Usually they work with what your meeting schedule is and then we can push it right up to O M B, but I will, I will confirm if we have to do a special meeting.
I do have a um, a question about the revenue number there, because I know we, I think we modeled it at like hundred and twenty-three, which is the same as the previous year. Um, so is there, has um undesigned it dropped significantly since last year?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one, that makes sense.
So uh, what's riding on undesigned right now is the debt for Engine um forty-one.
Right.
So we were hoping that Engine would get done, they told us it'd get done in a twelve-month period and then they came back and said, we need another twelve months. And so once the engine was done, then we were going to basically take out a loan, like a car loan on it, and then we were going to pay it down. Um, but and we'll share this with you, we're still waiting for all the numbers to get fully confirmed and solidified, but we we do. Since we had a light fall with maintenance and we had some other savings, um, I think we're going to make us we're going to take a substantial bite out of that debt on that, but it's still sitting on our undesigned account right now.
Right, but that means that the balance is actually higher. Um, so what I'm thinking about, most of that revenue number is coming from interest we're earning on the capital savings, but or our savings effectively. And I noticed that in the twenty twenty-five number, it dropped from like one twenty-five um down to fifty-three.
That's because of the debt sitting against the undesigned account.
Right, but that's assuming that it gets spent before it acquired and gains anything next year.
Correct.
The way I was looking at the moment is we're probably going to end up fifty or sixty thousand more revenue than um the these numbers suggest.
Yeah, it may be a hundred thousand.
Yeah, right, right, okay.
Because we had such a light uh winter with snow.
Right, okay, so we can probably say, so in practice, when we come to the end of next year, assuming everything else works the way it is, that number of fifty-two is probably going to be more like a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty.
Correct.
So our revenue will be a hundred lower and um that somewhat compensates. Now, we can't mod, we still have to charge the um, we still have to charge it next year because I think we have to use our best numbers. Um, I wonder if we can actually change the revenue protection. If we know, if we know that is not going to come out till the end of the year because of the twelve-month extension, then that may be a discussion with O M B about whether they can remodel that.
Yeah.
Bring some of that back.
Yeah, I'll reach out, uh, that that'll probably take me uh some time to get them to understand what I'm listening for.
I can, I can help with that.
Yeah, no, and in that, you know, that that uh Engine forty-one that, you know, it may be a blessing in disguise that we're, all of a sudden, we had a longer range plan to pay that off and, you know, and and leave reserves in there for undesigned, but now that it's been forced against the undesigned account and so. And what we're talking about here, if you're confused, so uh Gerwood has outside reserve counts. One is we have emergency reserve, almost six hundred thousand dollars. We have a reserve that would, that goes against our um bond rating um that we pay into. And then we have a undesigned reserve. Um, basically, that's what's left over, once we pay those off, that's what's left over. And um, we can use it and like when we have the big uh Halloween uh damage, uh, we use that to help pay for uh the for the repairs and then when we get the reimbursement of the states, we recharge that account. So it basically becomes a savings account, so what we don't use each year in operating falls into that account. And then um, and then as, also as our our uh, if our budgets go up, then it, we have to calculate those reserves to make sure they match a percentage of what our budget is, so.
And so revenue then is payment into the reserve?
Yeah, so then we'll make revenue off those reserve accounts.
Oh, like?
Interests and and dividends that they use that money to.
And then do we reinvest that?
And it goes back into the undesigned account and continues to grow.
Most of our revenue is actually from those, is interest from those.
Okay.
And so in the past, like, we've gone into that undesigned account where we rebuilt the uh fire station. We needed extra reserve or extra contingency money, make sure we had it. And the station got built, met budget, and then we put that money back into undesigned. So so it worked out pretty good, you know, try to keep that strong. In this case, with this engine, it's kind of screwed things up, but it's still working.
Any other questions, comments? Fine. Okay, I think if we covered everything on the number one, we'd entertain a motion for adjournment, motion?
Oh, before, sorry, quickly before you.
I've been seconded, anyway.
Uh, next Tuesday is a, they're bringing the new Rescue Forty-One down and you guys have a meeting during that period? So maybe worth just discussing right now, if you guys are comfortable with planning maybe a small break in there for about ten or fifteen minutes to go over and see the ceremony, they do the roll-in where the firefighters fill the station in. And then you can sit some cake and coffee and come back and finish the discussion.
Cake and coffee?
So, so I just.
Big beautiful fire engine.
Yeah.
Uh, a nice thing to support.
Is there a reason we couldn't start it, that meeting slightly earlier than seven, six thirty?
I was wondering that, if we could bump our meeting starting sooner on the, so it's the eighteenth, next Tuesday, a week from today. We're slated at seven, what time is Chief Weston saying it is?
Seven thirty, we could start at six thirty if nobody has objections here.
Jennifer, chime in. I can't do.
That's what I was going to suggest.
I can't do earlier than six thirty.
But you can be here at six thirty?
I can probably make six thirty, or start calling.
Well, we can resume to six thirty, so.
You guys want me to repoll or you said it? I've heard as a station, yeah, we're all.
Six thirty.
Agreeing, thanks, Jennifer.
So I would also agree with starting six thirty, so when we do take the break for celebrating and coming back, it'd be not a fast ten minutes, but maybe fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully.
And we we've told people we like to keep it to an hour.
And that's true.
Yep.
So then we'll just finish our meeting, go straight there and then go.
Yep, perfect, okay.
Now we're one. Now we can have two cakes instead of one.
And you can eat it, so.
Hey, you can have your cake.
Thank you for going over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just sent that this morning or last night, so.
Okay.
Great news.
Well, that's all I had in mind.
Okay, now I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, I'll send you in a second, okay.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Brianna.